Okay. Hi there, are we okay? I'm not hearing any feedback.
I'm not either, but I did turn the volume on. Remember in the lower right-hand corner, that little pop-up arrow? We muted it before because we're getting an echo. We're not getting one now, but. I just stopped the video.
Good enough.
I'm still recording though, so. Did you mute that, Peter?
Let me turn that off. So I muted the mic here.
Okay, we should.
All right, welcome to the planning board meeting. July 21, 22. Oh, yeah, we do. Richard, you want to get that one? I'll get this one.
Hi Jeff.
Here we go. Yes, you saw Jeff, right?
Yes.
All right, great. Richard, you want to lead us through this?
Yeah, so essentially. The purpose is that the Watson family would like to convert their farm into a three-unit apartment building. And this is shore land conforming law. One of the things that first jumped out to me may just be typo, I don't know, but. The HAT 200, if you don't have one, I have another copy over here. Has an address of 463 Smithfield Road. But the application is for 23.
It is for 23.
Right, so I don't know. Jeff, was that a typo or?
You're on mute.
He's in.
He's muted. Oh, there he is.
Jeff, you're muted.
Mute yourself, Jeff.
I'm on mute, I'm a lip reader, you want me to tell you?
Sorry about that, thank you Sarah. Yes, do you hear me now, okay?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I believe that is a typo. I didn't notice that when I forwarded it off to Richard. But we can get that corrected and have Mr. Persch can reissue that.
Okay, my second question on the HAT 200 was. When I pulled the. The one from the assessor's file. It is claiming that this particular residence is pumping 360 gallons. And this copy that I have that you gave me states that it's pumping 540. So was that system upgraded?
No, I believe that the 360 is probably for the house. This is a whole new system that's just going to be serving the apartments. And that's, they're three two-bedroom apartments. So that would be three times two is six times 90 gallons per bedroom is the 540.
Okay, so this is a permit that needs to be signed for a new system going in? Is that correct?
Yeah, that will be the one that's serving the apartments, assuming you're approved.
Excellent, that makes more sense, far more sense. That was, I think, the biggest thing that jumped out to me anyway. And I have some questions in here and it's just probably from my own learning. Because we haven't done a lot of commercials since I've been here, so. If you, you know, as we go through it, I can pose a question or two here or there. But that was, I think that was my biggest concern was the address not matching up. And the question on the pumping ability of the septic, so.
Go ahead.
It's been coming for a year or so ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we talked about it.
Yeah. And you guys gave us the kind of the thumbs up to pursue it, so.
Peter, before we march on here, I think it'd be beneficial to sort of rehash. Not rehash per se, but review what we discussed at that meeting. Because. Looked at. Potential for this. As crazy as it sounds, falling under three different ordinances. Subdivision, the multi-family dwelling from the, you know, ancient thing from the 1970s.
March 1778.
Yeah, just right after the Declaration of Independence. And, and, and the commercial development review ordinance. And my recollection, and I want to make sure I'm correct about this, and others recall the same. Is that we decided that it does not fall under the subdivision ordinance. Because this is an existing structure, it's not going to be new structures. And I had this conversation with my wife and legally state law says that it was. For multi-unit apartment dwelling or condos or any of those kinds of things. That could potentially trigger the subdivision law and consequently our ordinance. If you have a comparable ordinance under which it's going to be reviewed, you can do that instead. So my recollection is we decided that the subdivision ordinance does not apply. We decided that this does fall under the multi-family dwelling ordinance. And that falls under the commercial. Development review ordinance because of it being a residential, an entirely residential use. It now is being converted in part to a commercial use. I frankly think there's an argument to be made that that's not the case, but here. But that's what we, I think, decided at that meeting. What I would like to propose is to avoid duplication that we basically blend. Use this application with a minor modification to meet both multi-family dwelling ordinance requirements. And the commercial development review ordinance requirements. That old ordinance requirements are modest. Its review criteria are not unsimilar to the ones for commercial development review ordinance. That we have to admit finding the fact about. I think if we're careful about it, we could kill two birds with one stone with the same information. And avoid any duplication of effort on part of the applicant as well as ourselves. I don't know what others think about that, but that would be my suggestion.
I'm glad you brought up the sort of the recap of what we discussed at that time. Because it was involved.
Yeah, there were a couple non-conforming things. One was that if we were building new, it needed to be so far away from an existing structure. And it was too high.
Right, and we can deal with that. That, those are requirements from the multi-dwelling family ordinance. Or multi-family dwelling ordinance, excuse me. But that ordinance does allow for waivers, just like this one does. And so there's a process to deal with that, which we, I know we talked about it that last, the last time we met. As long as the party was okay.
And there's a letter there.
So.
Okay. So the proposal on the table is to blend this so that these, so we reduce duplication efforts. And we have a clean method of reviewing this.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, we just have to be, if we proceed in that manner, we just have to be clear as we're. Not so much in the course of the review or our, you know, review to see if this application is complete today. Which is, I believe, what we're, what we're about today. But when we get to the point of making a decision that we're clear, we're making a decision under both ordinances. And although there's, you know, there's no findings of fact form for that ancient ordinance. There isn't even an application for it that I know of, at least. Who knows where you'd have to dig to find it, probably in the basement of the old town office or town. And. Probably buried up back there or something. And the. I do happen to know, just because I was on the plane board back in the 1980s. That some of the apartment buildings in town were, were approved under that ordinance.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, like the ones that are today built. But. The, in fact, that's why the ordinance was created, because it was all of a sudden the influx of apartment buildings and condos. Um, but anyway, the. Anyway, that's my suggestion. To kind of speed things along, make it more efficient, not cause a lot of duplication of effort.
Um, how do other people feel about this? Because it was a bit ago when we talked about this. So for me, it was very healthy to go through sort of a recap, what we talked about, some of the issues at hand. And what ordinance is applied. So do the board members feel that George's recommendation would be the cleanest and most efficient way to go forward? Yeah, are you good with that?
The, the other thing that came out of that meeting, which none of us knew, is this does fall in one of your village zones.
Okay.
Right.
So that, that will be a factor as we go through this, yeah. Good to know.
That is good to know and. Right, because in the comprehensive plan, we have a couple of village districts. And North Belgrade is one.
Yeah.
This area is one and Belgrade Lakes is a.
But it does fall in your North Belgrade Village District.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks for.
Good reminder.
Would that show up in the assessors?
No, because there's a big map.
Okay, because I looked up, there's only, there was shoreline limited residential, so I didn't know. And I'm not familiar with that village stuff.
Yeah, yeah, there's somewhere.
The map.
Yeah.
But they're way beyond.
Well, I say we're.
Way beyond shoreline.
We're several hundred yards from.
Yeah, yeah, they're not sure.
Oh, you're not, you are?
Right, this is right on route eight.
Okay.
This is not down by the water.
And I misunderstood.
Well, no, the piece of property goes down to the water, but this is. There are beaches, man, you can't even see the water.
Yeah, no, you're right, there's the map, the site plan shows that.
You know, if you're driving by on the road and looked into where Camp Moden might be building something. You'd have to look by their house to look across a field to see where that building is.
Gotcha.
So you, they're really close to the.
Show an aerial photo, that would be useful, that show, kind of orients everybody onto where we are.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'll just, if I can share my screen here, just a second. Host is disabled participant screen sharing, so you have to let me share somehow.
Okay, there's a way to do that. Here's a share.
You got it?
Maybe.
Okay, no, if you don't.
I don't. Because I would be, I would be sharing.
So, let's see.
Hi Richard, good to see you again.
Yeah, it's nice to see you, Jeff. It's been a while since we were down at that dump site. Let's see. I don't want to share my screen. Okay, multiple, right here, I got it. Try now, Jeff.
There we go.
Thanks.
Okay, so. Just to orient everybody where we are, this is Ellis Pond down here to the left. Porshue Point Road and the Smithfield Road going right up here. Wendell Lane is right here. And the project that we're looking at is this red bimery here. So as you're driving up Smithfield Road, you can look over and see this, this bim, let me just. Yeah, this is, this is the bim that we're talking about right here.
Thank you, Jeff.
Here is Smithfield Road.
Yep, thank you for helping orient us.
Great, guys, you can see where it's on.
Yeah, I didn't know what it was called, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, the road is a continued one that went to Lane goes back to the lane.
Gotcha. Excellent. So speaking of Wendell Lane, that was one of my questions. So I think it's like the third, fourth page in, it's not numbered. But it says access to apartments will be from Wendell Lane by Route 14, which is private. So does that mean a row or?
Well.
Anything like that? Oh, you own all that?
Yes.
That answers my question.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So do you permit yourself to allow others, okay?
Yeah, we own it, we're good.
Great, thank you. All right, um, so do we have a good starting point then, planning board members? I mean.
Here, can we just ask Jeff if he's on board with this, or suggested approach to this?
I try anything that will simplify the process 100% George.
I thought you might be.
And that sounds like a reasonable approach to as well.
We don't go to the multi-family dwelling ordinance often? What color is the page?
It isn't even colored.
It's not?
Black and white.
Okay.
The, I have a copy right here.
And as long as someone has it. Yeah, I know.
Well, and it's not in our collection. No, it's not, you have, I downloaded it from the town website.
I can go burn some off.
We would need, we would need that, thanks.
They need the CRO as well, the address.
No, I've got, you've got CRO.
Sure.
I haven't, I don't have anything.
Yeah, you and I talked about this in the ancient, ancient history of this.
No doodles in the margins?
Well, there's a couple, but. They're publicly appropriate. I, I think, Peter, we can proceed as we normally would with a commercial development.
Yeah.
And we'll cover and then, and then some.
Right.
What that ordinance requires. The really, the only thing that that has in it that's different than here is what we just discussed. And that is the, the height restriction of 35 feet. And, and, and it sounds like we got that covered too.
Yeah, well, what, what was said in February was that you thought that that was, because at the time when that was written, it was the fire.
That's right. Yeah.
But we went and got the letter, so.
Yeah, so, you know, we could, for example, entertain a waiver request. On that basis of a letter from the fire chief.
That the ordinance, ordinance allows for that.
Yeah, allows that.
And I provided some information to the fire chief already, a site plan. And he's, he should be aware of that, we're, we're looking at this anyway.
Thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
So the first order of business, business for us would be to go through a checklist to, to look for completeness of the application.
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, and then, and I, you know, the preview so far is looking very good. But this is typical standard stuff that we would do to assure that the planning board in the town is satisfied with the application. Before we go through some stuff, further stuff, to then recommend what the CEO within issue boards order. Thank you. And. For everybody's awareness. Which I'm, I'm good with that. For everybody's.
I'm looking at pages, it is two and four.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah. So what I'm asking now is this goes from page two to page four.
Yeah.
Oh.
If you get three pieces of paper and you got a two, page, page two, page four.
So while, while Richard's doing that, I think it's fair to.
Four pages.
Okay, so, yeah, we're missing a few, so we'll, we'll go back to that. I think we should proceed, at least in terms of going through some of the checklist while we can. But it's here to honor their time. The applicants have taken their considerable valuable time out of their day to come see us. So just so everybody knows, we have a letter here, two copies, that, that Pam brought in. Is to certify that you are, as the owner of the property, you authorize that A.E. Hudson. Selfing engineers located at 10 Conings Street in Waterville, to act as your agent. So that letter is here as part of the package. So I'll make sure that, that Richard has that, but. Until tonight, we haven't had that, so thank you for bringing that in.
All right.
No, thanks, I'm glad you brought it. Okay, um. So shall we try to do the, the checklist to see how complete the application is?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So let's do that together then, shall we? I know part of the answers to these things are found as we leaf back and forth through the well-put-together thing that Jeff has done already, right? So for the interest of people who are on the, on the, virtually attending, I'm not going to flip back and forth. Because it sounds like paper crumbling to those people. So if you can just help us do that. So, starting off at the beginning, our checklist would look for the first thing, which is an application form. So that's early on in this. Are we thinking that that would be complete?
Yeah, there, there are a few things that have been skipped over or blanked, but they're minor, I think, you can say it's complete.
Okay, great, thank you. Next up is the applicant's agent authorization letter, we just tackled that. Next is, so I'd call that complete, next is the copy of the deed option sales agreement or TRI for this. And that was part of this. Next is written waiver request, Jeff has indicated not applicable. I'm not sure that there are any waivers, we've discussed some possibility of.
Yeah, I think there probably needs to be a waiver request, so I would set that aside.
So the waiver request would be for the building height being greater than 35 feet?
I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm just curious what the, what the waiver request would be for, is that, you believe, for building height being excessive at 35 feet or?
Correct that and, and the 100-foot separation from the home.
Okay.
Which both come from the, the multi-family dwelling.
Does it matter to you at all?
I don't know, but, well, in the ordinance, it doesn't, doesn't make a difference, but the. But it might make a difference to the fire chief and discussing, or this ordinance is so old that. What was a concern in 1976 or whenever this was, is not, not a concern for the fire department today. So. We could entertain a waiver request from that ordinance. And. And that would allow us to. You know, move on under that ordinance, but also there's a provision in the commercial development review ordinance. That says, is this in compliance with all other county ordinances? And so we can kill two birds with one stone that way. Does that help, Jeff?
It does, thank you.
How are we guys, what's going on over here? Pete, Rich, what's happening?
I want to clarify, clarify two things up here before we do go any further. The documentation I just handed out is book of pages, this is a register of deeds. And that's not complete, you got a page 2012, page 210 with 2011. They'll have that, and then. 2008, we're missing 2009. That's register of deeds documentation. And then what we just got second time through here is. For, you know, time for those ordinance information, a multi-family dwelling. Let's get the documentation.
What I gave you, the, the last paper that I gave you was this, which was in the ordinance's binder in the office. That's all I have. I don't know what George can help.
Yeah, what I, what I provided came from the town website. And that's the one that was registered with registry of deeds, broadcast by the voters.
Okay, and that's not complete because, as I said, page 2011 is missing. And page of the, you have registered page 2000, I'm sorry, 209 is missing. So it's, you know, missing 29 and 211, so it's missing.
Which ordinance is that one?
It's not an order, this is register of deeds documentation that George pulled off the website, I guess, with registry of deeds, the town or whatever, to be sure where you got it from. This is register, register of deeds documentation, so you understand what that is.
I do, I do, I thought you guys were talking about ordinance the whole time.
No, we're not, I'm not talking about ordinance. I'm just talking about the documentation here that George gave to the planning board, I'm to the code enforcement officer and just gave it to us now.
Yeah, no.
One second, I thought he.
So, Peter, you questioning whether this is an ordinance, is that?
No, I'm questioning the fact, no, I'm paying to your attention that the documentation. That we, that you gave to the code enforcement officer is not complete. And I'm just saying, what's missing is apparently two, two more pieces of paper. Because if you, if you look at the sequence.
When George gave to Richard, was that George multimedial back then?
So. Yeah, so the first pages are the ones that I saw.
Which page, which page were missing?
2000, I'm sorry, 211 and 209, so it must be on the back.
Was it double page, was it double sided?
Yes, double sided.
Okay, do we need that?
We just need the order.
From the website, we only have.
I think we clarified Pete's question about why he only got.
Right.
One, two, three pages versus five pages.
Right. I didn't realize the double side, but do we need that document? If you'd like me to recopy front and back.
I have it right here, right here in the computer. Okay, you want, then watch.
Wait a second, I don't have a hard copy, I do need it. You gave it out in the first place, so let's have it.
You were one.
Detailed.
Pizza work, you know, that's.
Detailed, okay.
It's totally irrelevant to this process.
If it's irrelevant, why did you, why did you have it handed out?
I have it right here if you want.
I don't want that, I have a bunch of papers.
So you will get the paper copy?
Fine, and I want, hope that the rest of you can have it too.
I have it right here in the laptop.
I'm good.
So is there something I needed to supply that I did not supply?
No, I don't.
You've done everything.
No, no, this is our own problem, Jeff, not yours.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll proceed in a moment.
Great, Jeff, it's all my money.
I'm okay to move on, Peter, you okay to move on?
Sure.
This is a checklist item.
I understand.
That's what we're doing right now. Okay, all right, so the last thing we were on was a written waiver request, which we, I think we've covered that. Jeff, you understand what we're talking about?
Yes.
The next thing is the copy of a tax map of the property. I believe that was submitted, is that true? Next is a Kennebec, a copy of the Kennebec soil map of the property, that two was submitted, is that true? A copy of the USGS topo map showing the property location, is that in?
Yep.
Copy of the Belgrade shoreline, shoreline zoning map showing property location. Copy of the flood insurance map showing the properties. Thank you. Next, copy of the national wetlands inventory map showing the property. Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
So that's NWI, next was copy of the main geological survey, significant sand and gravel off of the map. Showing the property location, that's. Tea, okay, thank you. Next, I'm on page 32 or 37. Copy of the main drinking water program map of public drinking water supplies showing property location. Jeff has indicated not applicable.
No, no public, there'll be water supplies, not public.
That's correct. It's not, this is not going to be. That's correct. It's not, this is not going to be technically a public water supply. Camp Moden has a public water supply and I thought I'd include that in there.
Okay. If you don't mind, Jeff, we'll keep on moving along.
Yeah.
Next.
I can get a thing from Camp Moden.
I I don't think we need anything. I think I think what we have under not applicable is appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next is copy of the M D O T highway entrance or access permit. Jeff has indicated not applicable. Private road, correct. Next, copy of the M B O T traffic movement permit and traffic movement study. Again, private road. Not applicable. Next, copies of required state, other required state or local permits. We have not applicable checked off. We still good with that at this point. Is there, do we have any reason to believe that other state or other permits would be required? I can't think of any. Next is the, this is the big one. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's it's the. It's the twenty four by thirty six site development plan drawing and show, and it has all kinds of stuff on it. So I won't list all this stuff. But lots of stuff. Thank you, Richard. He held up the big plan. Thank you. We'll go with that. The big plan.
The minor matter that the location of the dumpsters not shown, at least on the one in our packet, but we can deal with that later.
Okay, thank you.
Um, well, there's some specific standards about it and screening it and that kind of stuff. Right.
It's accomplishable.
Yeah.
We'll be able to get through it. I don't see it as holding up anything.
Yeah, it's a wire.
We'll get through it together.
Can be others. Yeah.
Okay. And next is the, I sort of turned the page on this. I'm on thirty three of thirty seven. Is a detailed to scale drawing showing the location and construction specifications of drainage features, roads, sidewalks. Access points, driveways, parking, traffic control features, fire control structures and public improvements. So we have complete on that one. Now we.
Yeah, those details are on the site.
Thank you. The next whole half dozen or more items are all checked as not applicable. But I'll read them so we understand where we are. So if there's any discrepancy, we can document it. So it starts off with documentation meets applicable state federal air quality regulatory requirements. So I'm thinking for for the nature of this application, air quality requirements would not be applicable in this case. The board members feel that sometimes. Uh, next would be soil erosion control plan, article six, section three. Would that be applicable? Okay, next is the main DEP certified contractor name.
Here is the state that we all on. I think it's applicable, but it's been provided.
Okay, so it should be as complete as not.
Right, right.
So that's a minor thing. Minor edit Jeff at your at your convenience, please, to indicate that it was actually complete. Thank you very much, George. I'm sorry, did I? I can't remember. Do we say the DEP certified contract name then? So that's that's listed here and is that applicable in this case? Because it's not showing.
Yeah, I know, but it's also required on all these projects as well, even if they're not the shoreline zone. The question is. What excavation work is going to be until? There's what the dirt, the walkways and 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 all of the stuff, right? So I would say then, yes.
So that would be applicable. So therefore, we, I'm going to start that one. Okay.
The parking.
Likely they have not selected the contractor to do this earthwork. So is that something we could ask for a waiver perhaps? And have the code enforcement officer check that once that is. Once they've selected a contractor, they just have to confirm with. East Greenwall that it's acceptable.
Jeff, I'll give you my opinion on it. And other board members can weigh in. I don't know that asking for a waiver will be the appropriate thing, but perhaps a. A type of.
Condition perhaps.
Condition, yeah.
So so that it would just be provided at, you know, prior to the start of construction, once you've decided on who's going to be doing the work kind of thing.
Yes.
Okay.
So my my guess, I think it's David Stevens that does all the work for Campbell and Ray Pizzi.
Pretty sure he's certified.
Yeah, so Mike, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that would be, that would be my first.
So that would be easy to deal with.
Yeah, and if he's not available, my second one would probably be an all the way construction and I'm guessing.
Yep. So very accomplishable, you know, we we hear.
That would be, those would be my. Two go to. I don't know anybody after that.
Yep. Okay, great. Again, we think this is very accomplishable. It's not a showstopper. It's just the way to get it done. That's all. Okay, uh, next is location of site structures listed on National Register of Historic Places. They've indicated not applicable. And I think we are aware that. This particular site is not part of the historic ones. I can't quote all of them, but we don't have many in in town. This would not be one. I think there are four.
And I do also have a letter from the State Historic Preservation Office confirming that.
Thank you. Oh, and that, I think you must read my mind because location of main historic preservation commission archaeological sites. They've indicated not applicable. I would be in agreement with that. Others too.
Yep.
Great. Information needed to meet air quality standard, article six, section one, not applicable. Next, information needed to meet access to public street standard, article six, section two. Is that still not applicable in this case? Because we're going to a private road.
Yes, as long as the user, the apartment dwellers, that's how they're going to access. The parking area, not through your driveway at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I agree.
Thanks. Uh, next is protection measures for historic and archaeological resources. This article six, section four. Still, is that still under the not applicable? Think. Estimated quantities of flammable, combustible and hazardous substances to be stored, handled or generated, including waste oil in antifreeze. So they they've indicated not applicable in this case. Is that still, does the board feel similarly? Next. That's the only one thing, you know. Next is evidence meets D M D E P citing regulations for oil storage and hazardous substance facilities. None is being posed, and this indicated is not applicable. Is that still the case? Next is a copy of application provided to the fire chief by the planning board or CEO. So then indicated complete on this one. We have a reference. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, that that's our job.
Yeah.
And I assume we haven't done it yet.
Right? Because, Richard, you haven't contacted the.
No, there is a letter here from the fire chief in Jeff's plan.
Yeah.
I know I have not talked to.
So.
The entire application. It's just that sort of an orientation of the site plan and, you know, shows the the building we're talking about. So it it is not a complete application that I sent. That's that's something that you guys need to provide.
Right, thank you.
So that's our job as the planning board.
Right. I'm going to start that one then. That's.
Yeah, so maybe.
So when we know that it's complete, when the application is complete, I would say, then if you wouldn't mind submitting a copy of this.
Probably the whole thing, Dan.
Yeah. Next, Nick, thank you. Next up is other information needed to meet material storage standard, including. Bulk storage of combustible and flammable materials and hazardous substances. This is for article six, section five. They've indicated not applicable. Are we satisfied with that in this case? It would seem to me to make sense. No objections, saying yes, good. Next is visual impact assessment, not applicable. I I still think that would be the case. Right, right, exactly right. Next is plan based on IFNW critical areas programs, recommendations to mitigate impact on the natural areas and wildlife habitat. Including deer wintering areas, not applicable. This is a structure that's already there. There's really sixty. Yeah, really. Okay, I'm now on page thirty four or the next page where it reads. Other information needed to meet natural resource protection standard, article six, section six, N A. No objections. Uh, next is board requiring post-development noise monitoring and reporting plan. If not, mark N A, if required, mark complete. Would anybody? Think that a noise monitoring plan is needed? I do not. Okay, thank you. So not applicable. Okay, so there's a buyer and you're going to be, okay. Next is information needed to meet noise standard, article standard, article six, section seven, N A still. Uh, exterior lighting plan and specifications for lighting fixtures. They've indicated N A. Does that mean no exterior lights?
I don't know what that means. I mean, does that mean that we can't put porch lights out?
No, it has to do with whether they're downward facing, much illumination that they'll provide.
Would that be for the for a building at night? Yeah, but I mean, I think it.
Yes.
In here. An outdoor light at each apartment entrance, but that's the only light that was mentioned.
Yeah, there's a. First off, Peter, I personally think it it applies.
Yep.
And there is some information about. Lighting in the application. It does not provide, it doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance in terms of how much illumination. Whether they're downward facing. It just says something like. Typical residential lighting or something to that effect. And I think we need a little bit more detail.
Okay, thanks. So I want to make sure to make sure that Jeff is clear, that we want to revisit that one so that we have details on that. Okay.
Do you want like a cut sheet of a, I think, even though I don't know if they're downcast, but. I was thinking like a typical porch light with a single LED bulb in it. So the tenants be able to have that outside their door. Uh, and also maybe a wall pack on the backside of the building away from the street. That illuminates parking lot just for security reasons. Uh, I think that's, that's all I would propose.
Yeah, Jordan speaks specifically about lighting being downward facing. Like the security lighting that you're describing.
But we can, I I probably can find a downward casting light, but we just want to make sure that there's enough light that. People can see to get from their car into the apartment.
Yep, makes good sense. So so right now, that's a, that's a, we need more information. So and I think it's, it is very solvable, right? So we just will have.
The one that parking lot is going to be, when it would be necessary for that light to be. The house is over here, so it won't impact the house and the road is out here, so it's not going to impact.
Okay, so.
Strictly on its own.
Okay, it sounded like a very good solution. And we can, if we need to talk about it more, about the standard that's found in that particular sub. No, okay, thanks. All right, can we move along then? Is that okay? Next up, information to meet parking standard, article six, section nine. I would think that would be applicable here. Is that?
It is, and it provided.
Okay.
Believe the standard was two spaces per apartment. And then I guess if you want to call it complete, we show six spaces on the site plan. So does that meet the standard?
I think so.
Yeah, I would think so.
And in fact, the standard in that, in the multifamily dwelling ordinance is two spaces per apartment.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Can we skip one line?
Which one?
This one here.
Oh, this, this one?
Yeah.
Would you, did we not just talk about that?
We took all the line. And then we went from that one to this one.
So we missed this one?
I think so.
Oh, is the board requiring a post-development light monitoring and reporting plan? You're right, we did not talk about that. Are we report, are we going to be requiring a post? Development light monitoring and reporting plan? So that would say not applicable in this case. Okay, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. I said I don't want to skip any. Okay. Where's that one? I think the one we're on is a written statement from the fire chief on capacity. Of fire department to provide adequate protection. I think that's the letter that we got. Is that correct? Yes, so that therefore complete is good, good. A written statement from the sheriff's department approving any proposed security measures. They've indicated not applicable. They, are we okay with that? I am. Other information to meet public safety and emergency services standard, which is article six, section ten. I'm not seeing any other anything that would be applicable in this case. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Uh, information to meet screening of structures, parking lots and other non-residential use uses standard. Article six, section eleven. I think that would be applicable.
It is, and they provide it.
Okay, so on that one then, rather than N A, it should be complete, I believe.
And put a few of those in there just to make sure you guys are still on the game.
Thank you.
Let us know.
Yeah.
What we miss, okay.
Yeah, really.
Because it's very plausible.
Next up is a two-scale profile, face-on view of proposed signs. And I'm thinking no signs. Therefore not applicable. Other information to meet science standard. Again, no signs are not applicable. Stormwater management plan. They've indicated not applicable. I would tend to agree since we're not constructing anything.
We actually, with the stormwater, I have actually shown a vegetated buffer. Uh, so anything running off the parking lot will be treated in a vegetated buffer before it goes the, you know. Twelve hundred feet or whatever it is down to the lake. So. Thank you. The stormwater plan and all.
Um, I would say it's not applicable, but it's certainly the right thing to do.
Well, and it it is, and it is that, what it will get to is the phosphorus export control method, which is applicable. But that functions, serves that function as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alrighty. Moving to next, other information to meet stormwater management standard, article six, section thirteen. They've indicated not applicable. Is that still the case for this? Next is we're getting to the H H E two hundred, Richard, which you talked about before. So. The, they have complete. So are you satisfied with that?
We need to revise the address as Jeff is aware of.
Um, we need to revise the address, as Jeff is aware of.
Minor, right, but, so what? So I just put a star next to it, so we want to make sure that we're, are good. Other information to meet wastes standard, Article Six, Section Fourteen. Um, so waste standards, um, not applicable is what they've indicated. I don't know how to swi- apply it all, okay? Uh, groundwater quality and quantity impact assessment. Um, they've indicated not applicable. Is there any need for that? I, I can't, I don't see it right now. Next, copy of deed restrictions related to drinking water and groundwater protection. Not applicable. Bring the page, I think, uh, we have one or two more to go, then the rest do not apply. Uh, next is copy of the main drinking water program, public water supply, approval and source water protection plan. As discussed, you're not providing public drinking water, so this would be not applicable. Uh, next is the copy of the MDEP stormwater management permit. That would not be required in this case, so not applicable. Next is the phosphorus export control method, and I believe, um, see Jeff and George, we, we talked about this with the plantings plan that you have submitted.
Buffer, that was going to be included, and that's shown on the site plan.
Thanks, sir, appreciate that. Um, the next one is other information to meet water quality standard, Article Six, Section Fifteen. Uh, not applicable. Um, I don't know if there's any other information required. That ones following this all have to do with, uh, well, things that don't apply to your, um, particular, uh, business. Mineral extraction, you're not doing that, right? Nor are you doing.
Put one of those down in your backyard.
Right, and so, um, I, I don't know that we need. No, okay. A- as we just kind of scroll through these things, I, I just don't see anything else that applies here, telecommunications tower, uh, wind turbines, the mineral extraction. Then we get to, so none of those apply. Are we all in agreement there? Uh, next is the hiring of engineer by town at applicant's expense to document road conditions prior to use and damage after use. Does anybody feel there's a need for that to occur?
No, that, that's specific to the construction of wind turbines.
Cause of the weight.
Yeah, yeah, weight and length.
And then, um, oh yeah, that, and then the next one too, emergency response plan during, uh, equipment transport. There is no transport permit. So not applicable, and the last one has to do with turbine, wind turbine, general liability, sir. Okay, so by my count, we had, I think, four, is that right? One, two, three, four, five, six. I think I've got seven, if I've done this correctly. Little things to talk about. Right, very, very accomplishable. So, so, um, playing or how are we, I'm just at this point?
Maybe it'd be, Peter, would it be worth recapping with, uh, Jeff to make sure he's?
I believe I have seven as well. Would you like me to go through them very quickly?
Yeah.
Uh, the first is the waiver request for the height and the hundred-foot separation between the home and multifamily unit was the first two. Um, you need a location for a dumpster on the site plan, which is on page thirty-two. Next page, um, this name of the contractor, and I, I, are you all set with that now? Is that something?
Uh, eventually we will need that, cause I'm, I'm sensing that there will be.
Approval on that, uh, sir?
It will probably be a condition of approval on this, so at some point you're gonna need it.
Jeff, you've probably seen us do before, uh, including on trillian zoning applications as well as these types is to just place a condition that, that information be provided to the code enforcement officer for five, before the start of construction.
Right.
Yes.
Did you hear that, okay?
Sorry, talking wrong direction, aren't I?
Yeah. But did you hear, did you hear that, okay? He was talking about that.
I did, the, yeah. I, I know I'm on the screen over behind him, so that's.
I apologize for that.
No problem. The, uh, also, did, we need a soil erosion control plan. Uh, I'm sho- I'm showing silk tents on there. So it's just, is that just changing the checklist? Or is that, do you need additional, uh, details to, I think I actually showed on the site plan how to, how to install a site or a silk fence as well.
Yeah, hang on, do, would, do we have a soil? Do we need a soil?
Um, no, I, I agree with Jeff that, um, that the information's been provided.
Right.
So that it's complete, and it's just a matter of marking it, search on the checklist.
Yeah, so what, what, what page you want for that one, Jeff? We want to make sure we're.
Uh, I'm on thirty-three, about a third of the way down, is the soil erosion control plan.
Yeah.
And I'm just changing that from, uh, not applicable to be complete.
That's right.
Correct.
Uh, you had a, you said you were gonna put a star next to the planning board providing a copy of the application to the fire chief?
Correct.
Exterior lighting details, so I can give you a couple of cut sheets on that. If you think that's necessary. It's, it's basically gonna be, you know, small, uh, porch light less fancy than the, the one I have on my house.
Can we come over and look at it?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear them.
So can we come over and look at it?
Yeah.
Gotta talk to the owl, just like me.
All right, so for, for the planning board, do, do we answer Jeff's question that, that? He asked, you know that we're looking for some specifications on the lighting that would meet the standard that's in the ordinance.
Yeah, so try to find something with downcast lighting only. Perhaps you mount it over the top of the doors and, uh, you know, have a large enough footprint that it would, you know, provide some spillage area and, and also on the back of the, well, on the back of the building away from the street. Can I use a, like a wall pack light that's, uh, shines down from the top, um, not like a street light, but like a, uh, a wall mounted light that would not shine up, it would just shine out and down into the parking lot area.
The only thing that would bother is the cows out there.
Yeah.
That's, that's their problem.
That would meet the standard that we have.
Yes.
So, so the answer is yes.
I, I can get the cut sheet there. The last one I have, I believe, is the, if the, revise the HHE two hundred, put in the correct address.
Uh, yes, and then, um, in fact, two other things that you've already provided but were marked in, uh, not applicable that I marked down was information to meet the parking standard. You supplied information, I think, that, am I missing it? Okay, so, so you supplied it, so please say complete rather than not, not NA. And the other one was, um, uh, information to meet screening of structures, parking lots, and other non-res use standards. I think that too is provided, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, so that was marked NA, but that's really complete.
To be marked complete, very good.
Okay, so, so you know where we're coming from and you know what your, um, homework assignment is? Okay, all right, thank you.
So, we have nine items instead of seven.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, nine items in, instead of seven.
Some of those are editorial things, like, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I can get. All of those items, I understand, and that, that's essentially the same list I have, whether it's nine, seven.
I'm a numbers person, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Engineer, our friend is an engineer too, so. Okay, all right, um, so you know what we'll be looking for, correct?
I do.
Uh, what, what else do we want to tackle on this particular thing right now while they are here? Is there anything else?
Um, well, and Richard, you're gonna provide a copy to the fire chief of the application, right? So that we'll be able to check that off at the next meeting.
I do have one more question. Um, page thirteen, number forty, says, describe measures to be provided for security and fire protection to post development or use. Um, I don't know, I know HUD regulations at least, um, require fire extinguishers in each unit. I don't know if that's something that needs to be approached or talked about. I mean, and I strongly encourage it, obviously.
So also on, while we're on page thirteen, uh, number forty-one should say yes.
Oh, good point.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a minor edit, so Jeff, did you, did you hear that, okay?
Yes, um, do you want to just change it to your copy, or do you want me to send you another? How, how much information do you want me to reprint?
That's a good question. Cause I'm not in, necessarily in the business of making you have to kill more trees, but I also am in, I am in the business of making sure the town has the most accurate data possible for the.
One way to skin that cat is, you have the original is on to make that alteration and have one of these ladies, uh, initial.
Yep.
Um, I wasn't quite able to hear Mr. Greenwell, uh, say something about a statement from the fire chief, uh, or that, um.
So Jeff, I was on page thirteen.
Yes.
Number forty. Um, fire, and specifically fire protection. I was thinking that you're gonna need fire extinguishers in each unit.
Um, our renters, well, our renters' insurance makes us do that.
Okay, yeah, there's no blanks, so I wanted to. Is that like a fire suppression?
Security.
Thank you, that's probably a good thing to have in there, but that's, um, I'm not sure if that's, uh, something the site plan that we can do, that's more of a, an interior thing.
Yeah, yeah, it was more a question, uh, perhaps from my own knowledge, Jeff, so, uh, thank you.
Jeff, I don't know if you ever can say our renters' insurance requires all of that, uh, extinguishers.
I think forty might be something like, like we're gonna have a, a Siamese head outside with the fire department to hook onto a sprinkler system or something like that, which we're not doing anything elaborate like that.
So do we just want him to correct the pages that need to be corrected and then I'll im- implement them into this copy that I have, or?
Yes, and I think as long as, I think what George was suggesting was that the applicant's initial.
After, after I get it, just call him.
Yeah. Does that sound acceptable in terms of, you know, administratively handling it?
Yeah.
And without having to kill more trees and print more stuff? Cause in the end, the town will have the most up-to-date information, and that's supposed to be. Okay?
I'm gonna have to give you your little check.
Okay, I'll do my best, yeah, for sure. All right, thank you, I really appreciate that. All right, so.
I said that Richard did it left-handed.
He's a, he's a southpaw. Um, so just so you know something about our process, so when we go through these, uh, types of applications, the first thing that we must do is make sure that the checklist, uh, we go through that because we need to check for completeness of the application. That's why when we have the little stars and the things we need to edit. That's what we're looking for. Once we determine that that application's complete, then we can go through the findings and factors, conclusions of law, and then make the, the final decision that goes then to the CEO. So we will see you one more time, is what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, so I, from our point of view, we've spent a lot of money getting to the stage, and we came in with a preliminary thing that said, can we pursue this? And you guys said, go for it.
Yep.
So we are requesting a waiver. Can I? Can I start applying for a business loan, cause we need to get that going, and there's a lot of things that we need to do here.
Can I help you answer the question? Yeah, you can, and just look the, uh, one there. No, you may have some uh, conditions you have to meet, so you can go ahead and do it. You know, the bank will, uh, entertain, sure.
I guess what I'm asking is, eventually this is gonna happen, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's my question to you guys.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, uh, you know, unless, the only thing I could see that would be potentially problematic is if the fire chief says thirty-five feet is too high. That's the only thing I can think of. Uh, everything else I've seen is minor.
Yep, from, from our side.
From our side.
From our side, and so there would be nothing from our side that would somehow stop you from, like Pete said, starting the conversation about doing the loan to get things going. I think Pete's advice is excellent, that if you let them know that we're not through the final process yet, it's quite likely they'd wanna know. Do you have a signed deal?
But I just don't want to start doing all these things, you know, if you're gonna go, oh, thank you, but at least change.
Yeah. Right.
I'm just, you know, I'm a little.
Yeah. Yeah, the thing, so Richard, I, um, maybe I confused myself. We already have a letter from the fire chief saying there, he's okay with thirty-five foot height.
Um, I'm reading it now, it's actually in, uh, section B. And it is, let's see. Well, that's, this looks like it was.
I know, I know that.
Okay, so, yeah, I think the answer right now is we don't have it, cause we don't have a signature on it here, so we, we gonna, we will need that, I believe.
I, I thought I heard somebody say that you had it, but.
So there, yeah.
Initially, we were here, not with Jeff, with Ben, and Ben said that he had talked to the chief and he said it was fine. So that is same creation. And apparently, somewhere we have a missing letter.
Okay, so that letter's critical, cause it'll be the basis for your waiver request.
Right.
So officially, we have the, the request to the fire chief from Jeff.
Yeah.
But we haven't gotten a response official.
But it hasn't been signed by the fire chief, right?
But you definitely want to.
Have that.
Have that before the next meeting.
Cause that would be important for us, I'm sure that'll be important for whatever final things that you bring then to the, to the bank and say, hey, we're, we're signed, sealed, delivered, hey, can we do our business? That, that would be my thinking, and.
So, if, uh, you're gonna give the application to the fire chief, um, can I get a copy of his letter so I can mimic in the app, in the waiver request, what he says and, and, uh, you know, re- reference his letter in my, uh, waiver request? I think that would be smoother. Then you can, you know, it would tie the two right together.
Okay, so. You're asking me to present this to the fire chief for a signature? Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
And then you want a copy of it?
Yeah, if you have. Yeah, I don't have, I sent him a letter requesting.
I see that.
And if he hasn't had a chance to look at that, if he could look at that and, you know, maybe if he has any questions, so obviously, give me a call, I can help try to explain things, but. That may give him the, all he needs to, rather than writing a letter himself, I think he can just sign off on that letter and say, yep, that's okay.
Yes, I can get with him, I can get with Dan and give him the letter and get his signature, sure. And that'll be, I can include, give you a copy rather of that, yes.
I would appreciate, yeah, if we can do that, that would be, I think, easier.
Okay.
That's easy.
I'm just concerned that we're gonna keep chips crossing in the night here, and we're not gonna get a letter from the fire chief that says, "A structure, turning a structure at thirty-five feet high, beyond the standard of the multifamily dwelling unit ordinance is acceptable to the fire department." So I think it would be cleaner, and the way it's typically done is, the town's responsible, it's exclusively for providing the application to the fire chief. Because he's not a county official.
Right.
Jeff, I think it needs, the burden needs to lie with you to pursue with the fire chief getting his okey-dokey on the thirty-five foot height building.
Okay, I can. I can call him, but I don't wanna bug him if he hasn't had a chance to review the information.
Yeah.
But, I mean. So this letter right here does say, because the address, it says, "Seeds at thirty-five height."
Yep.
Um, and it's looking for a signature from there, from the backside. I remember, why wouldn't that be?
That would be adequate.
Yeah.
And they could.
So I just simply presented this to him, get his signature.
Okay, yeah, I, that's fine, I, I just wanna make sure it happens.
Yes.
And it's.
Do we?
Right, right, time is money, and we wanna make sure you do what you need to do. So, so. That's a small thing, right, but an important thing. Right? Because then we can, we can proceed, because that seems to me like one of those things, if we don't have it, we can't proceed.
Yeah, I was just on the road, so pretty sure it's over.
Yeah.
And, well, I don't know if it's important for you to tell them too, because I'm really sure that, you know, we've talked to Benhead. Um. The people, uh, aren't being building at thirty-five feet, it's gonna be an attic, I'm saying, that those pieces, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's understandable, it's just per the ordinance.
I know, but.
So, I don't think, I don't think there's any problem with Dan, it's just a matter of getting this in front of his face, so you can look.
Okay?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Peter, the other thing that we have to do, the town wants to do, is, well, let me, we don't have a complete, complete application for such a moment, but the save time in the process, I think we are well enough along, and we know, uh, you know, that there isn't any big hurdles here, once the fire chief signs off and gets the waiver request. Um, could we, uh, go ahead and advertise to notify the Butters, which is part of the next step to avoid a third meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that's an efficient approach. Um, and I agree, I don't see any showstoppers here. So if I were betting man, I'm not normally, but I'd say, let's advertise. Right, so would you mind asking our colleagues up front to help do that process, please?
So that would be like the Ellis system, their defense. Yeah, we're good, we're related.
Yeah, and no one may show up, but, but, you know.
That can be problematic, you know?
I know, like, yo, cousin, stop it.
It's a good cousin, but.
Yeah.
That may be more problematic than some families.
We only.
The two piece. Um, Alvin Watson.
Okay.
My grandfather was the brother of that's you, no. Or sorry, the Withers, or the Withers.
Withers way.
Yes, okay, birth of Withers, and now Watson, brother and sister. This is Withers, is the mother and grandmother of the two piece.
Oh.
So Alvin Watson. They're across the road from each other, they live right across. It's the Watson's farm that we're talking about now. Withers Farm is right, so, yes, way back, we're all related, our, our mothers and brothers and sisters were all cousins. So we're like second cousins, I don't know.
Is that, yeah, several generations down, as the tree starts to get larger.
This is very off, but does the Watson, Watson Pond have something to do with your family?
No.
No. Different ones.
Yeah.
It's up the road, a little bit up the road.
Yes, it is, yeah, that was. Seven, Seven Lake was, was called Ellis Pond. Yeah, the farmhouse, right beside the barn that we're talking about. Her mom was born in it, and her mom was born in it, and her mom was born in it. Yeah, or grandfather. And I have the bed in my camp that my grandfather and my mother were born in.
Wow.
So that's, we don't wanna hurt or change the farm very much from what it is now.
Understood.
The barn is gonna look like a barn.
Well, the, not that this is, but this is getting close to historic preservation stuff.
No, the house has already been redone.
And I'm teasing, only because of the generational factor that you mentioned.
I've got a letter, it doesn't matter.
So, at any rate.
You got the letter.
I, I understand. Um, so I just wanted to mention, a little bit ago, we talked about the advertising to notify the Butters. And that's just a part of the ordinance, because not in your case, because probably all your relatives would not mind about what's going on, but in other cases, we would wanna give fair chance for people who might have something to say to express that in a setting like this. So that's the reason for it, it's in the ordinance, so. Yeah.
But I think we have everything within our confines.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in your case, I see you would have spilled across the way, and then there's the, next to the store is the place that Roy took. No, yeah, Roy took you, then going south, you've got the people, the horses, the woman there, the horses. Are they within five hundred feet?
Yeah, pretty close.
So you may wanna figure that out.
Well, time.
Oh, okay.
You can tell.
Figure that out.
That's the town's responsibility, and the staff will help get that down.
You know, and luckily, the house that we're talking about is far from the property line.
Yeah, okay, right, and then on the other side, you got, you got well, across from the woman, but the horses is the. Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And Jeff, do you have any other questions before we kind of wrap it up for you folks?
No, I'm all set. I think what I can do is work on getting this, these minor revisions made. Uh, can get that into you probably within a week or so. And the big outlier being the fire department letter, so if you guys are gonna chase that down, go from there, and so. Yeah. Um. I don't know when, when we might be able to get back on the agenda. Do you have an idea of when we can wrap this up?
Um, you, you let me know when everything's complete, Jeff, and I can, I'll give you a date at that point.
Okay, fair enough.
Good call. Good call.
Yep, fair enough.
One.
Great, alright, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Jeff, really appreciate your time.
Thank you, have a great night, folks.
Thank you too.
Richard.
And thank you so much for coming, appreciate your time, that's for sure.
Always helpful.
Thank you guys so much.
You're very, very welcome. Um, Richard, could I give this, this to you? This is the letter that says.
You can stay.
Cam authorizes eighty Hudson to be the rep. That they have to try.
I'll include it, and can I get your pages that you saw, so I know.
Sure, if you want, yeah.
Can I, I'll just borrow that, because I'm just gonna go ahead and.
My head scratching's kind of right. So checkmark is good, stars.
Stars, yeah, it should be nine of them.
You want to make that correction on page number forty-one on thirteen hour later.
Oh. Talk with him.
Well, you have it in mind, you should do it right off.
Yeah. Don't lose sight of it, right? Strike where the iron's hot. I'm not sure how that saying derived or its origin, but it's a great saying.
Uh, well, the saying is that you're forging.
Right.
Did you have the iron high?
Right.
Strike it right off.
Exactly.
Do you have a cooler you can afford it?
Right, not easily.
Thank you.
I probably missed what you were trying to ask.
No, that was, that was. I, I can't swear, I knew the exact origin of that.
Not to be, uh, what you guys call it, yeah. Ironsmith, somebody.
A blacksmith.
A blacksmith, that was the first one to say it.
Yeah. I'm sure, yeah. Alrighty, um, and Richard, that was our only official agenda item, is that correct?
Yeah, because I think it was George brought up that sometimes these means take two means to get through, so, and I'm not, I wasn't, I wasn't familiar with commercial, but I don't think I even done one yet, but.
Right.
Um, so I wanted to allow, make sure we had enough a lot of time to get through this.
Yeah.
So yes, it is the only agenda item of the thing.
Well, frankly, I mean, this is a relatively simple project. On others, we would have been here another hour.
Yeah, exactly. So it was a smart call. From a process perspective, um, I'd like to know if we could have a walk-on agenda item, though. And George, you and I both went to the select board meeting the other night, I'd like to make sure the planning board is aware of where we are at this point, at this time. So is that okay, Richard, that we do that? Have a walk-on?
Go forward.
Yeah, alright, so, so when Craig gets back.
I'm just gonna make talk.
Yeah. I appreciate it. Okay. So that was our official business. I have a walk-on item I'd like to add, so that we can all be aware of it. Um, the walk-on item has to do with, we went to the, there was a select person meeting the other night, Tuesday morning, where a number of things were discussed. Among them were how we were doing with regard to the revisions to the commercial development review, and this is a change to the sole funds. Um, so after some discussion there, there were, there was a presentation, a short presentation by Steve Buxbaum, to, he made some points, and he objects to what we have so far, and he had some salient points in there to convey, and he did so. So. I know, we, we had some discussion after he said what he did and so on, and, and at that time, when we left, there was, for me, from my perspective, and George, feel free to jump in here, I didn't get the clear direction that we were on timeline yet. Because of some of the points that Steve brought up, and George, what are your thoughts at this point? I mean, we could, we could go through those items.
Yeah, I, um, so what Steve presented is what he sent us by email, and, um, you know, the day after the select board meeting, um, he did a very nice job and definitely got some traction with the select board, the majority of the select board, I would say.
Um, he did.
The, um, I think it's very possible that they're gonna ask us to re, revise the ordinance and delay bringing it to the voters. Um, they're gonna decide that at the next meeting. Um, and, and I think, I mean, as you've all been to select board meetings, there's not a lot of clear guidance given to you on what they expect, but, um, the, uh, I suspect that the next meeting, they'll be looking for our reaction to Steve's comments.
Yeah.
I had a question. At the select person meeting, they voted, took a vote on majority of the, what, did they vote? As, did they make any vote?
No, there was no.
He said the majority of the select person felt that needs to come back to us.
Yeah, that's just my general impression based on what people were saying, what they were asking.
Right, yeah, I get that, I wanna, I read the, and I, you know, and I wanted to get. Specifically, if there was a vote, I wanna know what the vote was, okay? If there's no vote, then we don't know.
Right, okay.
It was.
We don't really know.
There, this, um, I don't know, where, they, those meetings are videotaped, so if you wanna watch the whole meeting, you can.
I know that.
The.
Go ahead, Richard.
At the select board meeting, was there a significant, I know Steve brought it up, and that was the with the buffers. Did that get, was that part of where they gained traction in terms of?
Yep.
Yeah, the, um, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think, I think the example that they brought up was basically something that we kind of chewed on here, which was, when you have the dimension of buffer that we've landed on, that chews up a great amount of, um.
Usable land.
Yeah, usable.
I told you guys so.
Oh, absolutely, you, you are right, you were right, and you are still right about that. And, um, and how objectionable would that be by some, and or how much would that impact the, the business model for someone who chooses to do something like that? And so anyway, that was my.
But then again, I still don't believe it's wrong, and I'm not gonna back down from it. Because when he first started his email, he said, "That was natural resources." You know, and our biggest natural resource is our lakes and our country, you know, the views and stuff. Country center, there's, you know, the sunshine's everywhere. You know, this is just one person, was contractor, businessman, I mean, I can't see one person as a contractor influencing the subdivision ordinance the way they're trying to let him influence this ordinance. Um, he already had his permit, CMP obviously didn't wanna deal with it. And I got pushed off, pushed off, so his little uh, solar power, obviously, wasn't that intriguing to CMP. And he's got three quarters of the trees in place already that it means. And I don't see where we need to be letting down on two hundred fifty feet from a road. That's out of the question. And why is it too, why is it out of the question, two hundred fifty feet from a residence? So I mean, I think the ordinance that we wrote is a very good stellar ordinance. And I'm gonna stand behind it, and I will show up at the next select board meeting to express that.
Yeah, I agree with, I'm more with that, what we just said, and if we go to the select board meeting, we go there, and I'll be there.
Okay.
Thanks. I know, I know some of the, one person, a select person there said, "You guys did a great job." So, you know, I know that was expressed, so.
Did, you guys saw the map? What was, once he fit allowed the new ordinance, you showed the map that he's left with to work on?
That's one place, and he already had his, his permit. It's one contractor, one place. Are you gonna change the whole subdivision ordinance for one?
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, Greg, I'm just saying that when, when.
You showed us all that stuff, you had that all.
Yes, and I, and when, when everybody agreed on the fact that those were the markets you guys wanted, I said, you know, you guys realize that at most, in the best case scenario, in a piece of property. in a piece of property that I wanna develop a solar farm, and of that piece of, of, of property, I wanna be able to usually almost half of it to do my solar farm. I said, "I would not invest here at all for any solar farm." And I said that, and everybody, no.
Well, it's pretty much the same boat with the subdivision. You can only use, pretty much by the time you do your setbacks, your, all the other stuff you have to do for a subdivision, you're only using half the property anyways. So why is that any difference?
I don't know, because I, I have not done numbers for the subdivision. And, 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 uh, I would say, my, my best guess, my, my best guess is that when you invest in a solar farm, it's a lot more money than doing a subdivision.
You think so?
All the subdivision keeps going at a low price. The solar farm is not gonna.
Also, it's in subdivisions, they're going up in price, and the private individual can't do it. I couldn't do what I did.
Well, what I mean, what I'm trying to say, uh, uh, Craig, is that once you invest in a subdivision, like the stuff that, uh, this kid, uh, Tyler, uh, Tyler Evans is doing, you build, you, you invest to say, have a million dollars, and in ten years, that's five, uh, five million.
No, it's not, not even close.
You will see that coming up, a lot of people coming up from, uh, Boston to spend, to spend a lot more in this area.
Well.
But anyways, we're just guessing on, on markets. But my point was that, at least from what I understand, is from this ordinance, and doing the numbers on this ordinance, that's what we end up doing. I have not done numbers for the subdivision ordinance. So I can, I don't have a educated opinion on that.
Right.
You may, maybe you have done the numbers and decided what it costs. So, um, and then, um, well, that's all I've gotta say about that. So when, when, when he re-refines to follow the law with this new ordinance, he's apparently, from what I understand, he's opted into the permit time. He's off by a month or two, he cannot re, re, uh, fish into the, into the pond. He has to follow the ordinance as it is, and from what he originally had three years ago, which was probably this one hand, he basically have two fingers. So it's, that's hard, he's had, put already three years into all that and all his effort. And just to, just to say, just to say that we don't care, too bad, too sad, it's irresponsible on our part.
CMP was interested in it.
It had, I, I'm not talking, I'm bringing CMP here. Are you saying that from our duties as a civic organization?
Same thing for a subdivision.
To a town, no, I know bringing that either, uh, that over. You're bringing the terms and discussion, uh, debate items that don't have to do anything with it. I'm focusing exclusively on this sub, this subdivision. He came here, I mean, this subdivision, this ordinance about the solar thing. He came here to help us with the solar thing. We owe him as a citizen, we owe him a, a pledge into it, and the, and because we stand there ourselves so long, he missed it for a month or so, when not, and so, uh, I don't know who can give me a waiver, I don't, I don't trying to benefit him better than anybody else, but, uh, certainly, the, the provisions that we have for this ordinance are very strict, are very, very strict.
They are, they are, yeah, so before we go any further, Rich, you have your hand up, I wanna make sure.
Oh, I just said, I read Steve's memo, and I didn't bring it with me. There was one place where he indicated that we had buffers on top of buffers, or whatever, same whatever. What specifically was your concern?
I don't either, was that?
There are several things, uh, now, see, he, he didn't have any, he didn't have this written up at the select board meeting, so we didn't have anything to look at. Uh, he, it was just an oral, uh, present, verbal presentation that he made to the select board, and then said that he would provide it to us and the select board thereafter. There were a couple of things that we tried to correct, um, with only limited success. Uh, but I, I also, I have a number of questions about, uh, you know, his write-up, um, um, the, uh, there's a couple where I think he might be a little confused, but, um, but his basic premise is, is the issue that Sarah and, and we've been discussing, that is, how much of his twenty-one acre parcel can he actually put, develop? And, and, uh, and, uh, he, he said, he told the select board, it needs a minimum of thirteen acres. And he's down to ten or something like that.
Right, he was under that, that minimal amount.
Yeah, um.
So the, the numbers that I crunched, giving us about sixty percent, it was in, in the ideal situation that we were dealing with the square property. As, as you, just making the property more rectangular, the loss is a lot more. And that's what he's feeling, that's what I see when he crunched the numbers.
So Peter, uh, Rich's question sort of, um, leads to the question I had, and that is how you wanted to respond to, or, um, discuss and, and, um, provide a response to this, to this like board, or however you wanna proceed, you know?
Yeah.
You know, as part of, uh, what you wanna bring to the next select board meeting.
Yeah. Good, because we have the points that he, he put in his email.
Well, I have it here, um, if you wanna look at it. He held it to all of us.
Yeah.
I don't remember what day that was, it might have been, uh, might have been Wednesday, actually.
Oh, yeah. It was, it was, uh, Wednesday, because he went to the meeting Tuesday, and then right off he reacted to it.
So he's going against everything that we have, the vision, the visual requirements, plantings, you know? Of course he is. You know, but this is what we want in the town for an ordinance, so, um, you know, he, he doesn't wanna do any of that stuff, none of them do. But the ones that can come in will be located in spots where we won't be able to see them. And, you know, everything's all about the vision, it's about, uh, planting requirements, so he doesn't want any of that. He wants a twenty-five foot setback.
I haven't ready, I have been ready, uh, having overwhelmed this week, I didn't cover any of this. I'm reading right now what he said.
Right.
So this, this, I really, you guys want me to read it aloud?
No.
Okay.
Um, not yet, but does, Rich, do you have something to say?
As I said, it's next select board in two weeks.
Second, August second.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we're gonna be able to accomplish everything we wanna do tonight, or does it make sense again?
I mean, it wasn't on the agenda, uh, you know, there's a sort of a fairness question, I think, of us, you know, uh, taking up his bullets, um, not at a meeting where, you know, that agenda item wasn't publicly notified.
I don't know how you people feel, but I'm one who thinks, in this case, it would make sense to have, even if it's next Thursday, a meeting to discuss this, maybe we can do it tonight.
I don't think it'd be fair. Uh, George texted me, or emailed me earlier and asked about this. And I think because it's such a hot topic in the town, it wouldn't be fair for us to have a sidebar to it, so to speak, whereas nobody's, has been alerted that we're talking about it, including the select person.
Mm-hmm.
So if we're gonna do something next Thursday, I mean, I could put something on, uh, an agenda on the website, and so that way, at least, it's out there for people that want to be involved. I just, I just think that the community is quite involved, it's, of course, the select person.
Problem with me is, we already had the public information on here. We haven't had the public, um, what we call the next step is the public, uh.
Hearing?
Public hearing. Public hearing. We haven't had that, I guess. So we're letting one person try to change their ordinance, the way they presented it.
I agree, he's very.
And the town's not gonna be notified, town didn't know anything about it, but this one person who wants to develop a small, uh, solar farm is, one, uh, is complaining about a few of our points, without letting the other town people in town know that we're sitting here discussing this, and about changing something? No.
I, I wasn't suggesting changing, no. I, I, I was suggesting a, a response to his comments, um, that we could then bring to, or well, getting clarification, assuming Steve shows up.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and then developing a response to provide to the select board, uh, I don't know if everybody got it, but, um, I got it, did, did everybody get an email from, uh, from Denny Ketchell, uh, suggesting just that?
I, I saw an email from him.
And it came out today, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Suggesting that.
It, it really comes down to, how, how are we gonna present our case?
Right.
Well, at the next select board meeting.
Um, I didn't get, I didn't read my email today, but, uh, I, my response, I think, is, I think the selectmen threw the ball back at us, I don't, I think that was inappropriate. We can go through the process, but I'm not gonna change anything, way we've done, we've been talked about it, I don't care, fine. But, uh, what we did, we did a little good job, and, uh, so, uh, that's, that's how I feel about this.
Well, I was. I'm sorry, the alternative? We didn't do anything, and the select board didn't like that, but they just don't approve it, they put it on a ballot? Is that what, what happened?
Um, yeah, the discussion was, uh, and, and what Steve asked the select board to do, so this is what was discussed, was to, uh, not proceed with the next steps in the process, and to send it back to us for revision, the ordinance, draft ordinance, um, and bring it to the voters in, at town meeting in March rather than November. The, uh, Bruce spoke up and, and, um,
Bruce, that's Bruce.
Glouche, Bruce Glouche spoke up and said, "The advantage of bringing it to the voters in November is, you know, high turnout, and that's always a, a desirable thing," and, and I agree with it. The, uh, uh, but yeah, it, it would basically be delay the process, throw it back to us, um, to revise, um. You know, Peter and I talked about it, uh, out, out, outside after the meeting, and said it's, if they're gonna do that, I sure hope they give us really good guidance on what they want, because, you know, that'll just, you know, we, we'll spend six months going around in circles.
I don't think there was good guidance there.
That's exactly right.
I didn't feel like there was, and I was.
Not, not at that meeting, no.
No, I, I was pissed because they were consistently saying, "Well, this town isn't as strict, this town isn't as strict." Well, that, we're not that town, we're Belgrade, you know, and all of our ordinance, I think, is stricter than everybody else's. And I agree that, I think Steve's asking too much. So I, they, like you said, I don't think they gave us any guidance as to what we're supposed to be looking at to revise, or, it's kind of like the level, maybe, maybe we should ask them.
I, I cer- I certainly think it's way too, it's too early to even be thinking about revisions. I, I think it's more a matter of how do we present, uh, our case to the select board at, at their August second meeting.
Right.
Uh, and if they throw it back to us, and then we have to revise it, assuming they tell us how they want it done, but.
Right.
But, you know, I, we're not there yet.
Good, because the flip side to that coin is, if what we have presented, they're not gonna support, I don't know how it's gonna get, get.
They're gonna have to get a new board.
Right, I mean, how, how, how does it go forward if they don't support it?
Um, I'm thinking, they need to vote, they should have voted among us. I asked, I, I asked, I simply asked, beginning of the session, time that they vote, and they didn't do any voting. They shouldn't have made votes, so, I think, we're, we can respond, uh, we need guidance, and, uh, so, as to how, what direction we need to take, be more specific, and with this, you know, this board here would appreciate to have a vote done on the part of the select people.
I don't think we should be saying that at a late at the point, at a good moment.
Right.
Um, I think we need to present what we have and stand behind it, and, um, and then if they decide, then they're gonna have to tell us something wrong. Um, so I think, before, I don't know why they don't wanna go to a public hearing to hear what, I mean, just because you're three selectmen over there. Why wouldn't they wanna talk to the public, um, for us? Why wouldn't they present that?
I, I don't think they said that, it's just, uh, um, from the video, it just, it doesn't seem that nobody got any resolution to it. They were, they were empathetic to what Steve had to say, and, um, that was basically the roll-up of the, of the meeting, there was nothing, there was nothing concrete in, in whether we have to change anything here, or.
Right.
Or.
The, the one procedural thing to keep in mind is, uh, if you recall our timeline for getting this done, this, so many, once the select board, that, that, uh, once the select board signs off on the ordinance, at least initially, the next step was for it to be, go to the town attorney for a review.
Right.
And then, you know, whatever legal issues may come up, we'd have to grapple with, and, um, but the, the public hearing, and there probably will be two, would be, two would be required for this, because we have those citing provision, prohibitions in there, and that's technically considered zoning. Um, the, um, uh, there's no opportunity for us, or the select board, or anybody else, to make any changes after those, those, uh, public hearings.
Right.
That's just to inform the voters, so that they know how, to make a decision how they wanna vote. I mean, it, it's all over but the crying at that point. Um, and, uh, so I just wanted to make that clear. There was something I forgot to mention, too, that, um, may or may not be of interest. Uh, the, uh, they asked, um, me to draft a, um, a, a question for the town attorney, um, which I've done, uh, and I can gladly send it to all of you if you'd like to see it, um, asking whether, so Steve's permit is twenty-four months, under the current ordinance, expired last month, in June. Uh, whether or not he would be eligible, or anybody else would be eligible under similar circumstances, to, uh, once the ordinance, uh, is approved, to apply for the additional twelve months, essentially, uh, that, in, in that amendment that we, uh, proposed.
Right.
Uh, I don't know what, I, I, I think it's doubtful, but I don't know the answer to that question myself, and that's why they wanted to, and, 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 um, because Denny's part-time and all that, they asked me to draft it, I sent it to Denny and Mary Vogel, and they're gonna handle it from here, but if you'd like to see that, I, I'd be happy to share it with you.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Sure, thanks, and just to.
I mean, it's a kind of a sidebar, but, but it, it, except to the extent that it might take some of the, um, uh, it, it would, I think a lot of the reaction we saw from at least some of the select boards, and maybe I'm reading too much in between the lines, but, was in, it, in sympathy to Steve's argument that he won't be able to, he, he, he will have to reapply to the, uh, uh, under the ordinance, and, and he wouldn't be able to, uh, get a permit.
Correct.
And, uh, the, uh, for anything that's economically viable, and if he and his project were out of the picture, I think it would be a different ballgame.
Right, right, because the sentiment, as I interpreted it at the time, was through no fault of the applicant, Steve in this case, was his project delayed, right? PUC and CMP had other things to deal with, whatever they are, and I don't care what they are, but the, his project couldn't go because of what those other entities had either to decide or have not decided.
They held him up.
Right, which, and, and we tried to make this point, too. This is, this revision has to do with the commercial development review.
This is, this revision has to do with the commercial development review ordinance. And what what we're trying to do is have something equitable in there for all commercial activities, right? And that's, that's what we've done. Um, anyway, so that was kind of like the emotion in the air about it. That make sense?
Why with one person and now with another person? Um, you know, you start being hypothetical with one person, you're opening up a whole freaking can of worms.
Well, there's a history with him, he 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 had applied for this way before. It was a time betray him, that's all.
Yeah.
So uh, we, we're not gonna reveal that tonight, anyways.
We will. Rich?
I'd say we could legally probably add something to this, these amendments saying. Projects approved prior to such and such. Do not contain the sort of the. What's that?
He let that run out, he's gonna come back and, so why would you do that? I mean, I see you guys all focused and around, I feel sorry for them, but still. We have stock ordinances about rate, rate for my shoreline zoning, subdivision, and now you wanna, you know. Give sympathy to one person. Where other people haven't got it.
Good point, yeah.
So that had Tyler, had Tyler Evans come here to complain about that ordinance?
I'm not talking just about Tyler Evans, there's a lot of other people.
Have any other people that don't, that don't subdivisions that come to this board or the select board to complain?
Talking about subdivisions, I'm talking about shoreline. And there's a long list of people, yes. I don't want them.
I would like to review those history in the selectmen meeting to see how many people are going to complain about that.
Rich?
Oh, that was just happening, but it seems clear to me we have to have one in the.
Yeah, so, next Thursday?
So what's this meeting gonna accomplish? First of all, what are you looking to accomplish?
One, one thing I, that memo from Dennis today, kind of, if nothing else. I think what he was saying is, it would make sense for us to respond to the select board. And it would address the items that Stephen or why, why we adopted what we did. And not what Steve is suggesting.
Right.
The rationale for.
Right.
Why we did it.
Just the how we got there, sort of thing, point by point.
Dennis was made through us, was something to the select board, telling them kind of like how we got there, why we, we did what we did.
Right.
The the um, one of the. I don't think it was intentional necessarily, but uh, the the way things just worked out is that. Peter and I had not much opportunity to respond to Steve's comments at all at that select board meeting. Um, we kinda had to insert ourselves and and. And at least in my case, I think I tried the patience of the chair, uh, when I tried to do so. But um, so this would be a way for us to present a con- sort of a comprehensive response, is my thought, Craig.
So, um.
Yeah, yeah, no, right.
Right.
And believe me, I don't wanna change the ordinance. I have nothing against what the ordinance is, but I think this is tough for anybody that wanna do investment. It's gonna be very tough and uh, um. Uh, seeing this particular case where we even, this uh, particular citizen. Even help us through uh, understanding the ordinance part and being sure for one month, this uh, is is no good business for anybody. Not from the town, not for him, not for anybody. Here.
So. True, very true. So I wanted to say, um, uh, it was mentioned, I can't remember who, George, maybe you remember too. At that select person's meeting, that this was viewed as, as, you know, a a restrictive ordinance as it was written. Right? I mean, did you remember someone saying that?
Yeah, no, somebody said it, put it in the context, and I think, Richard, this was partly what you reacted to, is the most restrictive ordinance.
Right, right, exactly.
I felt like you two got kind of beat up on.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
I'm just watching it, I didn't think, right, that's why I chimed in, I wasn't even gonna say anything at night, but.
Yeah.
Um, and I, you know, the other thing is consistency, the two hundred fifty feet, how how many times do we see that in various ordinances? And that's what we're trying to be here, is stay consistent, and I think that's something that should be presented to the planning board as to how we got, what we got.
Correct, and I think that type of rationale, um, um, goes a long way. People may agree or they may disagree with it, right? But it's not like it's totally, well, I would say it this way, I I don't view what we have done to be somehow arbitrary and capricious. Like, we just picked something cuz we felt like it, right? We had reasoning to it. People may not like our reasoning or like what we concluded of. But we put a lot of effort into it and we we took, we reiterated that back to the select board.
I think that's what the board needs, you know?
Yes.
Exactly, well, like George said, where we, how we got.
Right, right, exactly. And whether or not it sunk in that we compared other ordinances and looked for things that we could take, you know, from those other towns. It may not have sunk in, but we said, tried to see that.
Yeah, you said, we guys mentioned David.
And we mentioned some specific ordinances and we mentioned how we examined those specific town ordinances and. Uh, I think George brought it briefly, I think in one particular instance that was very specific about what they did.
And I don't think they would listen, to be honest.
Well, they were, I think they were drinking from the firehose at that point. Really, that's what it comes.
Yeah, it really just felt like they were only listening, yeah. That night, you know, that's, that's how cable cost.
I think all of them did. I think all of them were listening to it, all of them, not, in my opinion, all of them were. So, yeah, I mean, I was there, so.
I I'm not sure about Dan Newman, but um.
Hard to read.
Yeah, no, it was hard to read.
So, so if I could, then then ask, once again, of your time, for next Thursday. To to build a, a, a. A uh, a response that is a rationale, how we got to where we got. Um, okay, I agree to that, I'm not gonna do an extra work, I'll do some of the pattern of the session. You know, approach, I thought I'd approach next meeting, you know, see what we said and we'll respond accordingly, like George said. I, I'm not gonna do more homework, that's for sure. I, I, I hear you. It's been a lot of work to get to this point, now they're asking for more, and anyway, um.
Well, Peter and I both may, uh, try to make the point that, you know, um. Uh, in addition to everything we've already discussed, this is very much a compromised document. Using all of us and we've all bought into it, uh, as a consequence, um. And there may be bits and pieces that each of us individually don't like, but you know, as a group, as a, as a board, you know, we've. You know, this has unanimous support and uh, and. I was hoping that would carry a little bit more weight, but it it it, it didn't seem to register.
Right. So, that's the way it is, um, when, when asked if, um, cuz once like a person asked, uh. If we had to do revisions and and so on, would we still be able to make the timeline?
Right.
No, the answer is no.
And that's why I said, I said we would have to forfeit.
Yeah.
I thought it was pretty clear, but don't know, again, so we're trying, so, let's try some more. So, can we meet next Thursday?
Six o'clock next Thursday?
Is that okay? It would be the uh, twenty eighth. I don't even know if I can make it, but I'm asking for everybody's time. I can't remember, something's kinda happened next week, I can't remember what night, so, but I'll try.
Seems that unless there's another day when people find out they can't make it. It it just seems to me that the only way we're gonna provide something back. And might as well go on Thursday.
Can I, can I suggest something? Uh, I guess what we're trying to do is to, to do a write-up to answer the select. Which one of you will be willing to change anything in the uh, in the ordinance as it is? I I just, it's not a ball, it's just, I have any feeling, I, you know, Craig will not change anything, um. Bean will not change it, I'm not gonna change anything.
There's nothing I would want to change.
Okay, okay.
Not at this point in time, I mean, as I said before, this is a compromised document, we've all bought into it.
Yeah, we're done with it.
And and um, and the time to be discussing possible changes is. Only if they send it back to us and tell us to revise it.
Right, this what we do, basically, we're building our case.
Okay.
I mean, that old analogy about, you know, um, you take a quilt and you start pulling one thread out. Well, pretty soon the whole quilt falls apart or whatever that analogy is. Yeah, so, you know, um.
So then, then we all redacting a, a, a document, answering the, the select board. Uh, what is the reasoning be- behind the items that Steve is uh, is addressing?
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct. We're, we're basically building a case.
Yeah.
About um, the reason and rationale.
Do we need all of us to sit down to do that?
If you don't, the answer is probably no, um, but if you uh, can, we'd love to have you there.
We haven't finished our agenda, how, how do we want to finish?
Yeah.
Um, do you want to both from review of minutes this week or you still wanna? My CEO update is real quick and I'm not gonna touch on discussion for a new turn every year due to time. But uh, basically, I just have about uh, you got five permits. We, uh, I've scheduled two for the next meeting. Go, come back to the walking farm again, right?
Yeah.
So, do I need to delete one of those or do you think we can do two? I think they're fairly simple, one's out of the gardener, he's just. Carrying off most of the deck, carrying down the shed and putting up the bunkhouse, he's actually dropping the square footage of the purveyed surface. The other one is a landscaping thing within purveyed papers. All shoreline and non-performing. I I think they're gonna be fairly simple, so you folks think that there's gonna be enough time to address the Walkman family farm? And those two, or would you like me to drop one of those off the bucket?
I'm gonna go for, you know, the three.
Yeah, put, put, put them first too.
Yeah.
The Watsons. Yeah.
Yeah, first, I mean, I'm guessing that'll take, what, three quarters of an hour, maybe an hour? And then max, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes on each of the other two.
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Well, I don't care what you folks wanna do, you tell me and I'm, I'll draw it up out of the wish.
Let's try it.
By both applications and the walkings first.
Yeah.
Okay, you got it?
And so that should be on. So, the seven twenty-eight, are we gonna meet then? And talk about our rationale and document it, and then that way it can be presented back to the select person, so they can have something to react to.
Do you guys want me to print out that email from Steve, give you all a copy for that?
Sure. Right, so. It is to the question about the logistics for the meeting tonight. Richard, you said the uh, meeting minutes?
Yeah, did you wanna hold off?
My goal would be to hold off.
Okay.
Does, does anybody object and really feel?
We could do the first one, which is clearly a easy one to do. The other ones, I'm not sure if it's too late to go back and, and uh, they're not written up like the typical one. I know that can't be done because it's so old and it's whatever, but.
Part of them, Nick did these, by the way, Nick Poole, Trevor, um, he took the time to do these. And uh, yeah, I noticed they weren't written up in the same exact format, but he had a hard time um, hearing a lot of it. And that's why a lot of it is kind of voided out, so to speak, or just left out. Um, so, you guys decide what you wanna do, so that I, and I'll just put whatever.
I'm finding Richard's suggestion of doing the May nineteenth since I wasn't there.
It's one, I'm not sure whether uh, Andrew, Anthony wrote these up or not, but I didn't find anything significant wrong.
Me either.
Seems like something we could prove a long way.
Okay, let's do that then, just gonna tackle the May nineteenth ones. I don't have anything printed from me, but may I? Oh, it was?
Yeah, he saw, Peter.
Yeah.
I got it.
I was all, all behind this whole thing.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, when we got to the prime farmland discussion, I mean, we had a brief thing about it, but we wanted to get back to. When George was around because there was a, a key topic in the document.
Yeah, following me.
Yeah, a link here, more lengthy discussions.
That was all fishing.
I don't know, I wasn't here either, so, Craig, you, Craig, you and and Mr. Baker.
Pete, Craig, Rich, are we ready, the three of us?
I made motion, uh, two minutes of May nine, yeah, May nineteen.
As, and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor, so Craig? Rich?
I can do.
You can, and shall, and my, I too approve, so we approved the May nineteenth meeting minutes, thank you. Is that it for tonight? Thank you, motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, Craig? Seconded, all in favor, Craig? Pete, Sarah?
Yes.
George, me, yes, thank you, everybody, all right. Richard, um, I have.
We also have this.
Yes, sir.